Happy wonderful evening, everybody. I am going to call the Royal Oak City Commission meeting for July 10th, 2023 to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Douglas, followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you can stand, I ask that you do so.
Whatever may happen in the world, it's within our ability here to make Royal Oak the kind of city that people are proud to live and work in. We will remember our oath to honor the Constitution, to respect and guarantee the safety and freedom from persecution for all people, no matter their race, religion, nationality, gender, age, or identity choice. We will base our decisions on facts. We will speak the truth. We will govern honestly, kindly, with an open mind, respecting our history and traditions. We will do our best to leave our children and all who follow a healthy, sustainable, beautiful, and welcoming city. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to item four, which is the Police Department charity golf fundraising check presentation to the Royal Oak Historical Society. I saw a lot of uniformed officers here. Immediately, I thought, what did Commissioner Macy do again?
It's always me.
But this is good news. Uh, should be a little green light. Yeah, that looks like it's working out.
First of all, we want to thank the commission for allowing us to do this tonight. Representing the Police Department, Sergeant Spangler and myself, Lieutenant Renaud. Each year, the Police Department holds a charity golf outing that raises funds for local charities. So this year, on May 22nd, 2023, we held it finally back here in Royal Oak at the Red Run Golf Course. We'd like to take this time to thank the Red Run Golf Course, our sponsors, Arts Beats and Eats Foundation, Hyatt Place Citizens Banks, and A.F. Jonah Construction. We'd also like to thank numerous other local businesses and community supporters, as well as the golfers, that made our event so successful this year. We'd also like to recognize Dan and Tony Yazbeck of Fifth Avenue, who are big supporters not only of the Police Department, but help us find all the golfers and the sponsors to do this. Again, we'd like to thank the commission for allowing us to present this. The charity that we chose this year was the Royal Oak Historical Society. The Historical Society provides enrichment throughout local history materials and captures our city's rich history so that it can be shared with the entire community. So this year, we're proudly present the Royal Oak Historical Society. We're a check for $15,186.
This is like incredible. Just.
Here we go. Everybody, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, my gosh. All right. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mario, would you like to say some words?
Two minutes.
Do you take as long as you need.
Okay. I just wanted to let you all know that at 89, after 22 years of being the volunteer coordinator, whatever you call me, I don't know, of the museum, I am turning over the reins to my coworker, who has been with me for 22 years, Johanna Schur. She will be the new executive director, or whatever the board decides to call her, but we won't be the curator anymore. I don't curate anything since we were in church school. So now she does the upstairs, I did the downstairs. I was the con artist who got people to volunteer. Can't do that anymore. You know, at 89, it's time to hang up your hat. So 22 years is a good, long run, and I have totally enjoyed it. Without my friends, nothing would happen on our internet, on our website, on our computers with our income. And he takes care of it all for us, along with running his store. So I just thank all of you who have been to visit, and Kyle with his kids, they're so cute. And so he, Brandon, you're Kyle. I know.
Kyle's cute, too.
Yeah, you're cute, too. I love you. So anyway, thank you, guys, for being so supportive of the museum, and we really appreciate it.
What a big win for the Historical Society. This brings to item number five, which is the Main Street Oakland County presentation of Royal Oak Main Street Accreditation. Let's see, Mr. Hill.
Good evening. That's a hard act to follow.
Do you have a $15,000 check?
I don't right now. I think we've, uh, we give at least $15,000 to Royal Oak every year, which is pretty exciting. We just don't do it all at once. So my name is Anika Norris. I'm your liaison with Oakland County Main Street Program. Oakland County is one of the only countywide Main Street programs, coordinating programs in the United States. I am here to present the accreditation, just to let you know a little bit about it. Statewide, countywide, and citywide coordinating programs evaluate, select, and recommend qualifying communities to Main Street America on an annual basis. To qualify for accreditation status, communities must meet a set of rigorous standards. Evaluation criteria identifies communities that are building meaningful and sustaining revitalization programs and includes standards such as fostering strong public-private partnerships, supporting small and locally-owned businesses, actively preserving historic places, spaces, and cultural assets. So Royal Oak has been in the program for 15 years, a little gap in between. We were happy to have you back about five or six years ago. And then this is the fifth year of being accredited. So it takes extra work to be accredited. It's a, Main Street is a grassroots organization. It's an economic development tool that really focuses on community, small business, and getting community support and participation. So I'm just happy to be here with Daniel today to present their accreditation certificate. They work hard, they do a lot of really great stuff. We're super thankful that you give us the time to come to present in front of council. Without council's blessing, the DDA would not exist and would not have the funding to do what it can do in a downtown. We recognize that, and it's very important, and it's great to work in this community and see all the great stuff that's going on, so. Thank you. Unfortunately, Tim's not here. We had one other small presentation. This year, at our main event, which is our event we hold every year and typically around between March and May, but we give awards out to the communities that participate. So it's usually not focused on directors, it's focused on volunteers, business owners, board members, big events and such. But this year, we decided it was really important to give awards for kind of longevity within the system. Tim Twang is our longest-standing DDA executive director in the county. He's been there for over 25 years. I have a little paperweight for him. We missed him at the event, and I was going to give it here today, but we'll leave it with Daniel and come back and give it to him another time. But I just think that's pretty awesome, because 25 years is a long time. It's a very hard industry. The DDA gets a little political sometimes, which you don't ever want it to be, but it can happen, right? So it's a lot to go and keep strong and keep plugging away and making sure that the downtown is very special for the people that live in the community and the small businesses that are pulling in customers from outside your community as well. So I just think that's pretty neat, and I thought we should mention that as well. So we'll get this to him. But thank you for your time and thank you for your support. It is. It's quite, it's quite pretty. It's actual, from Pontiac, a small business in Pontiac. It's a blown glass. So, thank you.
If I may, just a quick moment. The DDA is happy to continue to engage in Main Street America. We live off of their core values, design, organization, place, or promotion, and economic vitality. I know, I speak for myself, for Tim, for our DDA board, we're very actively engaging with our business community and hoping to continue to make downtown Royal Oak the destination that it is. And of course, Tim, for his 25 years, that's unheard of in the industry, and major kudos from me to him as well. And the last thing I'll plug is our first Social District Saturday, this Saturday, 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It's going to be yard games, acoustic music. Head on out to West Fifth, the closed portion, South Center, between Third and Fourth, and Eagle Plaza, and Centennial Commons.
Wonderful. Nicole?
Thank you.
Any questions?
Can the county get a picture?
Yes, I was just going to ask if we could come down. I think it's been tradition that we get a picture, and we really appreciate all the county's efforts helping us. Accreditation is a big deal, and it's a big testament to the DDA, the volunteers, the small business owners, and the folks in and around our neighborhoods and all over that come and support our DDA. And so I think, you know, this means a lot, and I think it's extra motivation to keep us going. So congratulations to everybody. Start off the commission meeting with two good news stories, good feelings. All right. So this is going to bring us to number six, the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Dubb.
Uh, I'd like to move for approval with one additional item. We just have a brief conversation, given the letter we've gotten today. If perhaps Aaron can give us a brief update on our tree maintenance program, and a question is how these trees are selected, real quick. It looks like we're a little bit late today, so hopefully we should really get to that as item 15 without too much.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Dubb to move forward with the agenda as presented with an additional item 15, which is just a brief discussion on the tree maintenance and planting strategy for our tree program. Second by Commissioner Collo. Oh, Mr. Macy?
Is Mr. Fadelli, or Mr. Filipski ready for this? Did he get any notice?
I'm not going to ask him to speak to this specific tree, but he's well, he's well-informed on the program that we run and how we run it and how trees are selected. Okay. We'll leave it there. All right. I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, we have an agenda, and I don't think Mr. Filipski will get stumped on this one. All right. Branching off into other business, brings us to public comment.
This is my fault, man.
So the city commission relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the city commission on any city-related issue, whether it's on the agenda or not. I ask that city, or I ask that comments be directed to the city commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you want to, if you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me. They come up to the podium. For the record, you'll state your name and address. Please be mindful that the city commission wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker, not per topic. There's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem. It's always good to email us, especially ahead of the meetings. That way, we can get your information and bring it up as appropriate. Please note, typically, we don't respond directly to public comment. However, we are taking notes, and when the agenda topic is discussed, we will bring up your questions. If your issues have nothing to do with anything on tonight's agenda, our city manager is also taking notes and follows up accordingly, and we always recommend just a quick follow-up email so we know how to get ahold of you if we have a follow-up item versus, you know, not having any contact information. So with that, who's first? Yes, ma'am.
Dan, you want to allow us to answer questions as well?
You can ask questions when we get to the topic. We'll ask them on your behalf.
Okay. Um, I'm Mary Bogers. I live at 1418 Ottawa, which is a quiet street. Say something funny so I can get over this. I'm here because I want to know if there's any kind of a noise ordinance. Is there a certain amount of decibels that the city follows?
Yes.
I know there's holidays, and I know people do fireworks, but after working an extra day from the hospital, I drove my street, and I felt like I was in a war zone. It was like an arsenal, competing arsenals. And one neighbor in particular, it went on for hours. And I just feel like that exceeded whatever decibel level there must be. I had a new, because my cat died, I have a new kitten, it was screaming. By the time I got in the house, my outside pet was gone, and the fear knocked down a barrier. Usually bring her in before it gets dark, and it was only nine, and it was like a war zone going on, and it went on a long time. So I did ask the police, and I say, well, you know, it's, they're allowed, I guess, till 11:45. I've looked and looked for my pet and can't find my pet. Anyway, in putting my flyers up on the telephone poles in the following days, a woman saw me putting them up, and she said, I'm so angry. I wish somebody would go to the city commission. And I said, what's wrong? She said, my mother was dying, and she died two days ago. So I was putting those up on Friday. Her mother died on the 5th. She said her mother could hardly hear, but she reacted strongly because of the loud vibrations and loud noise. So maybe it's nothing you can do, maybe it's the state legislation. I think before, some of these were illegal, and now they're legal, because I remember people going to Ohio or other states. Is there anything that we can follow? Because it rattles my nerves, you know, that's so loud. And I know it's just for this holiday, but we have a beautiful city fireworks. We have a parade. We have other ways to celebrate. And it seems like, okay, that goes on for an hour when we have city fireworks. Could people somehow be contained in this city to do this for one hour, four, five hours straight? I mean, is this the way we're going to celebrate independence in this city? It's just rattling old people when they're dying and people losing pets? It just seems like there's a better way. And I know you, you have celebrations, but I'm just wondering if there are an ordinance, and could it be changed if there's not one now as far as decibel levels on firework days? Thank you.
Thank you. And I typically won't respond, but I can tell this is something we share, and I'll just let you know, when this first was passed by the state, we fought tooth and nail. We think it's absolutely a crazy idea that these sort of munitions would be allowed in a highly dense community like Royal Oak and our neighbors. We lost that battle with the state. We wanted to ban them outright. They said, nope, on any holiday federally recognized, or they had a list of holidays, you can have the day before, the day of the holiday, and the day after. And of course, those rules supersede any noise. When I said, yes, we do have noise ordinances, but this firework ones, the state trumps our, any local ordinance that we could do. Their justification was it was going to be an economic boom and all these jobs and everything, just as usual, but it sounds like it was just making some buddies some money. I'll tell you, I think it's absolutely, you know, I think our best route is to continue to work with our very receptive state senators and state reps to see if maybe the climate in the House has changed since even as of last year, and maybe there's something that can be done, because there's no need to light these fireworks off in a community like Royal Oak. It's just a recipe for disaster in so many ways. So I'm with you. This commission and previous commission members fought, but, you know, it was like banging our heads against a wall. So I feel awful for you. I feel awful for your friend. I hope you do find your pet, and my heart's broken for you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Joseph Fisher, 310 West Sixth. I'm concerned about things going on in this town. I had one concern, but now I want to know what's going on with the trees, Kyle. Got to tell me this eager with the trees. It's like a conspiracy theory. I was worried the other day. I was at Holiday Market, or no, Hollywood Market, and I got very confused. On aisle seven, sign, two columns, three rows, aisle seven, applesauce, feminine hygiene. And I want to know who allowed Gwyneth Paltrow to come into our community. On a more serious note, yeah, Kyle, that's good, Kyle. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I've got others. Anyway, on a more serious note, I'm injured, which means at some point, somebody's going to give me some money. So I'm curious, do we know the, I'm not a property owner, what the average property tax is for a Royal Oak resident? Do we know? Is that a figure available? Okay. Whatever that number is, after I pay my bills, I want to start an endowment for the city using whatever that number is, and I would encourage other residents to do so as well. Reason I say this is because a lot of times, millages just don't get things done, because a lot of the people voting don't have a lot of interest on what happens after they pass. Some do. Some want to see the community thrive and grow. Others are indifferent to that, and I want to be able to have a way to make funding available for things that we should do, but can't necessarily get people to vote on a millage to do. So I'm pledging to do that once I get this all sorted out. Third thing, the Fifth Street plans. I don't know who's going to be in charge of the design of that, whether it's going to be some sort of outside company. I'm hoping that there might be a special board created to have input on the final design plans. Like I said, I live right at Sixth and Washington. I go through all, through there all the time. I actually do rideshare as well, so I'm very sensitive and aware of the issues and situations that can result from all the pickups and drop-offs that happen there, essentially designing better. And I want to make sure there's a way for not just me, but other citizens to participate directly in that process. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Hi, my name is Jason Edelston. I have lived and worked in Royal Oak since 2006. I first want to say thank you to the city, other small businesses in Royal Oak, and the community at large, supporting my family and Ray's Ice Cream for the last year as we become the new owners. This last year has been a whirlwind of ups and downs and hard work and exhaustion. But Ray's has now hit a major obstacle that I've come here today to ask for your help, to really ensure the survival of our neighborhood institution. We are, of course, a destination, Ice Cream Parlor on Coolidge between Normandy and 14 Mile Road, that relies on people to navigate Coolidge to get to our business. We have very small walkable traffic from the neighborhood. DT Energy is about to begin a two-month project during the busiest time of the year for our family business. Without any notice, DT Energy is about to shut down Coolidge at 14 Mile while Normandy Road is still under construction between Crooks and Coolidge. DT Energy has not given Ray's Ice Cream, Leprechaun Field, or a number of other homes and businesses any notice. I'm being told that this project was approved by the city back in January of this year, and DT Energy has waited till six months later to start the project. So the urgency doesn't seem to really be there from DT Energy's edge. I would ask that this city council and the mayor today pass a resolution to put an injunction on this work till after the Dream Cruise, or at least the construction of Normandy has been closed. If this is not possible, at the very least, I ask the city council and the mayorship to change the detour that the city of Royal Oak is currently posted. That detour from 14 Mile goes from 14 Mile to Crooks, Crooks all the way down to 13 Mile, 13 Mile to Coolidge to get to my store, because a very small little work is happening on Coolidge just by 14 Mile Road. We're a destination standpoint. Customers are not going to drive all that way to get to us. At the very least, can we change that detour so it goes from 14 Mile to Delmar Road to Normandy? This way, it'd be much shorter, probably about a third of the distance, to allow our customers to visit our parlor during the busiest time of the year. I'm just worried about what the health of the business will be, because there's an expectation that when we're open all year round during the winter time, when we're not getting too much traffic, that we can really make a significant amount of money to cover being open for the rest of the year. I really ask your help again today in doing what you can to pass a resolution to help us and stop DT Energy and its contractors by giving no notice to the neighborhood to create construction that creates a big headache for everyone, including my business, Bullmore Lanes, Leprechaun Field, the Royal Oak Golf Center. You're really killing during the busiest time of the year for our businesses, business. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you. I have confirmation that Mr. Break is going to take the lead on following up on that, and I will be in that conversation with DTE as well. It's a good point.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Harrison, Royal Oak resident. Hesitate to say that I'm disappointed that even those of you who have experienced fatal drug abuse in their families would vote for the marijuana sales and use at the Arts Beats and Eats family-oriented event. You socialists always overreach. It was not enough to allow three marijuana facilities in Royal Oak where one facility is within 88 feet of an educational facility for high school-age students. The city attorney stated that the zoning ordinance would allow marijuana facilities to be located less than 1,000 feet apart, contrary to the marijuana ordinance. However, the zoning ordinance conflict resolution states that the most stringent of the requirements shall prevail. The master plan draft summary says, overall, Royal Oak doesn't need significant change. Rather, it needs a lot of little changes over time that will be transformative altogether. This is an understatement. The document is replete with references to rezoning and changing from traditional zoning to form-based zoning. No wonder you're concerned about the no rezoning signs that are popping up all over Major development changes are proposed, such as the narrowing of Woodward Corridor and replacing existing businesses with multi-story residential units. That's one block away from my house. Building multifamily housing on the downtown surface parking lots. This will negatively impact downtown business, since many people will not park in the structures. I encourage all to attend the Planning Commission meeting at 7:00 PM this Tuesday. That's tomorrow, July 11th. There will be a master plan work session at 7:30 PM that will include a review of the draft master plan direction, and public comment will follow. Again, I encourage people to attend and speak up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. All right, who's next? Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to close public comment and bring the meeting back to this side of the table, which brings us to item nine, which is the naming committee recommendation. Oh, no, that brings us to number eight, the consent agenda. committee recommendation. Oh, no, that brings us to number eight, the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda?
I do what I want, it's fine.
Okay. All right. So nobody wishes to pull anything off the consent agenda. Commissioner Dubac?
For approval of consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Dubac is our second, second by Commissioner Macy. Excuse me. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Consent agenda is passed unanimously. All right, now it brings us to item nine, which is the naming committee recommendation for Isabel and Myron Zucker Park. And I see Ms. Davids down here, who has put a lot of time and effort and work into this, has been a quasi historian, and certainly a great advocate for many things in the community, and I'm really excited to hear her presentation tonight.
Well, great, thank you. So I'm here tonight representing the Royal Oak Naming Committee and the recommendation to rename Exchange Park to Isabel and Myron Zucker Park. Isabel and Myron Zucker, who are shown there in those photographs, played a significant role in enhancing the beauty of our city during the 1930s, 40s, and 50s. The picture of them in the 30s, they're newlyweds. Myron has just graduated from Cornell with a master's degree in electrical engineering, and they moved here to Royal Oak. He took a job with Detroit Edison. And once they began to call Royal Oak their hometown, they really got involved. In the 1930s, Myron founded the City of Trees Committee, which accomplished many, many things, but here are some of the highlights of the City of Trees Committee. They planted thousands of trees throughout the city. I found newspaper articles that said they were planting up to 1,000 trees per year. They encouraged the city to form a parks committee. They assisted the city in creating and helping to pay for the city's first parks master plan. They secured more than 500 acres for parks and playgrounds throughout the city, and they advocated the principle that no child should have to walk more than a half a mile across a major road to access a park. The nature-loving Zucker's made it their lifelong goal to beautify Royal Oak. And today, Royal Oak takes pride in its impressive collection of 51 parks and a thriving tree candy, which consistently earns the city the esteemed title of a Tree City USA from the Arbor Day Foundation. The city has earned that award every year since 1976. So I believe that it's highly probable, if you reside in Royal Oak, that the trees adorning your front yard and your neighborhood park are the result of the visionary and unwavering commitment of Myron and Elizabeth. And this is some video of Exchange Park I see here up here on the screens. The naming committee believes that Isabel and Myron exemplify the criteria outlined in the City of Royal Oak's municipal code, which recognizes individuals of good character who have contributed significantly to the city's progress. The committee recommends renaming Exchange Park to Isabel and Myron Zucker Park, honoring their enduring legacy in our community. And I want to just say in conclusion that the Zucker's, and the picture that I had before was them in the 1980s, they both passed away in the 1980s, and they had one daughter, Judith, who passed away in 2014. But tonight, from across the country, the Zucker's grandchildren are watching this meeting via a video stream link that Richard has given them, and those grandchildren are Catherine, Dan, Ken, and Louis, and they're joining us via stream from California, Maryland, Pennsylvania, and New York. So, where's the camera? I'm sure they're waving back. That would be great. So anyways, that's my presentation.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Davids? I just want to say, great job. I know when we first had our conversation, I could just feel the energy. I had to move the phone away because it was just such a positive electricity in your voice to get moving on this project. And, you know, through your research, just finding out how remarkable just two individuals in our community back in the 30s, 40s, and 50s have made a lasting impression, not just in the physical landscape that we see. When you ask people, what do you love about Royal Oak? You talk to them on the street, or you give them a survey, hands down, parks is number one. When you ask, what else do you like about Royal Oak? Hands down, our neighborhoods, number two. And our neighborhoods are, I think, we have a great diversity of housing in our neighborhoods, and a lot of the beauty of our streets comes from the trees that were planted decades ago, if not a century ago in some cases. And the fact that, you know, those physical landscapes still exist, the 51 parks is important, but also the way the Zucker's shaped our culture and our values and our vision and what we're doing today, and maintaining and carrying that forward by continuing to invest in parks and green space and continuing to plant trees at an unprecedented level, that comes because of the work that they did can be directly attributed to the good work that they did, and for our generation to carry on the same legacy. And it's a pretty remarkable story. They were pretty remarkable people, and I'm sure their grandkids are also remarkably lucky to have them as grandparents. So this is really, I can't think of a better fitting name to go on an important park in Royal Oak than Isabel and Myron Zucker Park.
Can I get any more?
Mr. Douglas.
I move approval of the renaming.
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas. We have a second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion. Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, thank you, Ms. Davis, for bringing this to us and to the naming committee and all the research that's gone into this. You know, I also during, over the weekend, looking into this agenda item, actually went back and read some old commission meeting minutes from the 1930s to try to figure out who Mr. Zucker was and what was going on, and it's phenomenal. A lot of the programs that he started came about because of the WPA. You know, this is a national crisis that came about, and they're trying to fund cities, and he had the foresight to use those funds, and the city had the foresight to use the funds. And it just reminds me of where we are today with ARPA, and we're spending millions upon millions investing in our parks again, investing in green infrastructure, and buying trees. I mean, we're planting trees. I think it was about 800 last year. So it's great to see that this tradition started back in the 30s. Another issue he ran into at his first meeting, he simply asked the city manager for a map of the city, and he was told no. There was dissent on the city commission to actually get a map made of the city and the parks. You know, they couldn't go to Google Maps back then, and they didn't have, you know, they needed someone to sit down and physically draw a map, and actually took an act of this body in the 30s to get the committee a map. And within a year of that committee's formation, is when you first see in writing, you know, I've always heard about how, you know, there was this committee that came out here and said, we want parks within a quarter mile of every house in the city. I always thought that was lore and legend, but that happened, that within a year of the committee's formation, they wrote a letter to the city commission, and that was the direction that they had taken, and we've proliferated with that over the years. So it's a fascinating story. It's amazing to see. We're still using these federal funds to continue to improve our city, much like they did in the 30s. So thank you again to Ms. Davids. I'm looking forward to seeing this name. And finally, with, you know, Isabella being on the name of the park too, I think that's really important. You know, there's half of, you know, all of us have someone else who helps us be here, no matter who it is in our families that supports us. It's the same for all of our committees and volunteers also. There's someone in some way helping them. So it's great to recognize that, you know, it is not just the person sitting here talking, but the people behind them who really support you and make sure that we continue to make this a better community.
And Isabel was an accomplished author.
She was.
Writing books that still are sold today.
She was the editor of the Detroit Evening Times, The Garden editor, and if you, if you look up her, like in newspaper, on newspaper.com, you'll see her name mentioned all the time. She was always talking about trees and plants, and they both really loved nature. And Myron, his grandson asked me to mention that Myron took all the pictures for Isabel's book. So he helped her too.
How lucky are we to have, you know, even back in the 30s, people migrating with such talent from, you know, New York State coming into Royal Oak, and we're kind of seeing that transition today as well. People coming in and trying to establish ourselves as a welcoming community and attract folks, and I can see the next generation of Zucker's coming in and leaving their mark as well. So it's an inspiration for everybody, generations new and in the past. Anybody else? Oh, Commissioner Dubac.
Just real quick, I want to again lend my congratulations and thanks to the naming committee and Ms. Davids for bringing forward such a fitting recommendation to name a park after folks whose contribution has so greatly contributed to the quality of life that we enjoy today. So thank you. Very well done.
Thank you.
And thanks to them. Okay. All right, well, we have a motion on the table. That was our discussion. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimously passed. All right.
Thank you.
And Ms. Davids, just, so the public knows, and maybe I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, but when we get, you know, sort of everything lined up to change the sign, and we're going to have hopefully a little community celebration.
Yes.
To not just, you know, what we're doing here tonight, but to really do it in style when we're ready. Is that, is that fair?
That's correct. We're hoping, yes, Mr. Filipski, we're hoping that we'll get the sign changed, and we'll do something late summer, early fall.
Like an unveiling or something?
Yeah, and we'll, we'll make it all about community service and their honor.
Awesome.
All right.
Amazing. Thank you. All right. This brings us to item 10, which is the Michigan Liquor License Commission Establishment, North End Tap Room, 111 South Main Street, request to amend plan of operation. I see Lieutenant Renan back there, but I also see DC Spencer, so it's up to you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city commissioners. Thank you. What we have before us tonight is a request to amend the plan of operation for North End Tap Room. North End Tap Room had a plan of operation that was approved back last August for their establishment, and what they'd like to do this time is add an outdoor service patio on the sidewalk on Main Street, and then they're also reducing the interior capacity by a little bit. Those are really the only two changes that they're asking for in this amended plan of operation. So that's it. Simple.
Questions? Commissioner Dubac? Thank you, Mayor. So I see no objections from the police department, and I assume this doesn't stray from our standard patio agreement at all?
That's correct. The police department doesn't have any objections to it, and I believe that the approval for the actual usage of the city property is going to be the next agenda item on the, for tonight.
Commissioner Cole?
This seems pretty easy, so I'll move approval of the item as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Cole, second by Commissioner Hunt.
I did have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Let me finish this one second.
Oh, are you still okay with the second?
I, sure.
Okay.
Well, it depends on his answer. Just really quickly, do you, do you have an idea of why the reduction, part of reducing the seating on the inside?
I do not, however, the applicant is here this evening. If John would like to come up and maybe answer that question?
Sure. Basically, the fire department did a, did the square footage calculation, and it was slightly less than what we should have had in the first place.
All right.
So just dropped in a few seats. Also, since I think we're about to talk about it, we're putting up the patio that used to be there. So when it was the Dixie Mizzou, we actually still have the railings upstairs, and assuming we can clean them up and get them a little less rusty, we planned to put them just basically back in the same anchors that they were in originally. So we should meet. We're going to check exactly the city rules.
Second. Okay. Any other questions?
How's construction coming along?
Great. We're hoping to be open at the end of the month.
Awesome.
So maybe we get all the permits done in the next week or two.
All right. All right. Just in time.
Yeah, yeah.
And outdoor dining too, or outdoor seating, rather. I think that's a big thing.
Yeah, it hurts watching summer go.
No, that's really good. Really good. Any other questions? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those approved? Motion passes. All right. Now that brings us to the license agreement for the aforementioned and approved change of operation.
So I will speak to that. Good evening, Mayor Fournier, and members of the city commission. This was compiled by engineer Holly Dennehy. That's not available this evening. So speaking to this, the area that's designated for the outdoor seating is approximately 240 feet and will provide adequate spacing for 18 seats. So there's a slight variation that was mentioned in the previous plan. It said 16, but the, what I believe what the applicant desires is 18 seats to be included in that outdoor patio area. So that's how this license agreement is put together and presented and recommended for your approval.
Okay, questions? Commissioner Douglas?
Move approval?
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. All right, I think it'll be good, you know, get some service outdoors. All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, congratulations, and good luck, and, you know, hopefully you don't run into any last minute issues, but can't wait to see you open. Yeah, it'd be nice. It'd be fun. Thank you. All right, this brings us to item 12, which is the Commission for the Arts Recommendation, 2023-2024 Artist Laureate. I see Ms. Barkman's here. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, commissioners. You may or may not remember the Artist Laureate Program. This was a program we started, the Commission for the Arts started actually way before I got here, and it's been a few years with the pandemic and just kind of getting everybody's feedback under them that we're bringing the program back. So the Artist Laureate Program is designed to recognize a Royal Oak artist for their contributions to any given art discipline, so it doesn't have to be any specific type, but they do have to be a Royal Oak resident, and the commission was really excited to bring this back this year. So we are nominating our second Artist Laureate for your all's confirmation this evening. They have nominated Ms. Roberta Bloom, or sorry, Broom Brown, this evening for her work in poetry. This will be our first Artist Laureate in poetry and our second overall. The Commission for the Arts felt that not only did she have a great plan to bring poetry into the community and help create poetry by engaging residents in the creation of poetry, there was a tangible work product at the end. So the idea was to create a book of poetry based on members of our community attending and participating in this. But they also felt that as a body, they really had focused on other forms of art during their time, and so this was a unique opportunity to focus on a discipline that we hadn't spent as much time on. And so Ms. Brown is here this evening. I don't know if you want to come up and say a few words, if I can volunteer you all for that, if she wants to come up and talk a little bit about her, her plan.
Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm really excited to engage in this project with the residents of the city, and I also want to engage you as the mayor, as commissioners, and I'm going to give you a prompt. You don't have to write this out now, but your prompt is going to be, I remember. And I want you to write out what you remember about Royal Oak from your first, your very first memories. Some of you might be lifelong residents. Some of you might be relatively new here, but I would like to have those remembrances so that we can include them in this project. I'm also going to be talking with students at schools, holding writing workshops at the library, senior centers, and a lot of other spaces as well. And so I'm just looking forward, very excited to get going on this project and include as many people who are interested as possible. And so I thank you for your confidence in me.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. What a wonderful idea.
Thanks.
Can't wait to see.
Yes, me too.
So I will collect your submissions if you'd like to send them to me. So just to wrap this up, the next steps in this process, we'll, with your approval this evening to, and the nomination of her as being our Artist Laureate. and the nomination of her as being our Artist Laureate, we'll work to create the contract. This is similar to what we did for the first one, which resulted in the tile, the mosaic tile mural that's over here in City Hall. And then we'll, that'll kind of spell out some of the details about the number of events, the different places, all the things, and you hopefully will see some press on this tomorrow.
Awesome. Questions? There's a motion. Commissioner Dubac?
I love this. I'm glad that we're getting back at it after the couple of years of the pandemic. I'm really excited for this concept. Thank you for stepping forward for this and for contributing your gifts to the city. I'm really excited to see what comes of it, and thanks for helping to shepherd this and again to the Commission for the Arts for everything that they do to bring arts to the front and center of our community and our culture. I'll move for approval.
Your motion by Commissioner Dubac. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right.
Thank you.
Can't wait. All right, one second. All right, that brings us to item 13, which is Approval of Matrix Consulting Group Proposal for Development Review Process, Community Development, Department of Fire Prevention Division, and I'm going to hand that over to Mr. Bright.
Okay, thank you. So at the second meeting in April, the City Commission authorized the City Manager's Office to seek proposals to, from consultants to conduct a comprehensive operation and organizational assessment primarily of the city's community development department, but we also included the fire prevention as the fire marshal's service is very integral in the development, redevelopment of properties. So as noted previously, the building department is a very busy operation in the number of applications that they receive, not only for building permits, but also for site plan reviews that go before the planning commission for infill development that occurs frequently. So ideally, as I mentioned in my staff report, the goals are to identify any inefficiencies in our current procedures, strategies for improving the lines of communications, and improve customer service at each point in the process. So since that authorization, we had an RFP document that was up from early May until approximately about a month later, we received 10 proposals, three of which was narrowed down, and there was a staff committee of seven to nine of us that conducted these interviews of the three semifinalists that have noted in the staff report. Any one of these firms would be excellent. I was impressed with the quality and more importantly, the work experience of working with communities of similar, even larger, that have dealt with very complex issues. Matrix did rise above for the reasons that I noted below, but two specific examples that they gave is that they worked with similar operations in Clearwater, Florida, and Knoxville, Tennessee. Secondarily, the consultants consist of individuals that are former practitioners. So these are consultants that have worked their entire career as consultants, but rather have been a service provider and have worked for public sector agencies. Based on their, their record of the, the percentage of the recommendations that have been implemented, they've claimed that their past clients that have implemented 85% of the recommendations that they've made. So have many success stories and that they can tout, and as a result, that was a unanimous selection. There was nine of us that conducted the final deliberations, and this is presented to you for your approval. Timing of this will, will start approximately in August. We'll continue on into February of next year. So if there's any sort of adjustments that need to be made, could be incorporated into the budget process. The dollar amount has been set aside. This is coming out of the state construction fund, so it's, has more than ample amount of dollars. Coincidentally, out of these three semifinalists, they are the lowest bidders, but that really wasn't a factor. It was more of the quality of the proposal of why we submitted that. So this firm is out of San Mateo, California, which is the San Francisco Bay Area. However, the consultants that would be working on this project are in the Midwest and the Southeast. So they do plan on visits here to work with staff to conduct interviews, stakeholder engagements, and then when the final recommendations, they will be here before the City Commission to make the, the final presentation of the recommendations. So based on that, and the agreement has been reviewed by the City Attorney and some modifications that they accepted, this is presented for your consideration for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. I have one question out of the gate. So obviously, from the city side, there's a liaison, there's a manager who's going to be managing this project. Who's the manager managing the day-to-day of the project? Is that you?
No, no, that will be Mr. Fenton.
Okay.
So.
Okay. If you hadn't had one picked, I was going to suggest him being sort of, you know, you always have bias when it's your own department. You know what I mean?
Right.
And so if you have someone that's kind of looking at it from an economic development point of view, that might be, you know, good to have that arbitrated eye.
Yeah, and that's, that's a driving force. One other thing I neglected to mention that will be important to consider in this process is we will be recruiting the sustainability manager, and I see that as an integral part, and that needs to be incorporated as part of the approval process, what we review, what the expectations are. So that wasn't mentioned anywhere in here, but I think that the timing will be just right as we're bringing on a new staff person and will be very much part of this, this process. So, so I agree with you that of having that objective view that it'll be managed by the City Manager's Office, and this is not casting any dispersions of, of any of the staff. It's, we have a dedicated group of individuals, but other communities have sought improvements and have succeeded, and so will we.
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rick, I just have a question around the timing of this also.
Okay.
So I'm looking at page 32. They did lay out a timeline, and I appreciate you padded that just a little, but it looks like their final report is expected sometime in December-ish, so I can see if that gets laid maybe February. But what is your plan, once you get this report? What's your vision? You know, when we have this report in hand, how long do you think it takes to start to implement some of the procedures? And what, at what point would you like to see us maybe at an 85% completion rate?
From, from my experience of, so back in my, my private sector experience with, working with a community that did something similar to this, I would say that it could take up to a year. There may be real obvious things, so better signage, increased communications on the webpage. So there'll be those, net that overused term of low hanging fruit, but those should be implemented immediately. But in terms of process improvement, of making sure that there's those improved lines of communications, may take a little bit of time. I can just speak to anecdotally, the issues that are brought to my attention could be folks that are, whether it's residential, more commonly, commercial. Construction is that, that's not their acumen. And so you have a small business owner who's acting as a general contractor, but have never really conducted something of that scale, and runs into issues that where they're seeking final approval and need assistance. The hope is that anyone going into a project will have a better understanding from the beginning of what the potential pitfalls, the things that they should be aware of that could be found through the inspection process, and that I believe will, will help produce a more predictable outcome. But, you know, again, I say this very diplomatically, it's, it's not a broken system, but we do have a dedicated group of individuals, and we're seeking to improve this. But just off the cuff, you know, kind of those, those sort two, two timelines.
Yeah. And then just to clarify too, is that one year from when you get the report or one year from today? So?
One year from the time that we received the report.
Okay, which, which is reasonable.
Yeah.
And then also, is this group, you know, we've talked about how, you know, they're going to look at, see, you know, there's what best practices we have now. Maybe there's some industry-leading techniques we're using, and then bring in some new techniques on top of that. Is this group specifically for a community development and project development? Or do they, would they be able to look, if we're happy with the results here, could they look at some of our other departments if, if we deem maybe they, they came up with a good plan and there's improvements they can bring to other areas?
So that's a good question. Their two specialties are community development and their other is public safety. So getting into, say, if they were to, this is hypothetically now, we're to look at DPS, there, within the team, there's a former public works director that's, that's part of that. But if you look at the information on their webpage, that's where they tout where their greatest amount of expertise in those two areas. And we do have a former fire chief that will be assigned on this specific project. That'll be working with the fire marshal and our fire chief here. So, but I would say it, highly recommended that over time that we do look at other operations. And the other consultants that we considered, like Rough Tellus and the, the other firms that were mentioned in here, could do excellent job as well. And so I would say let's consider that as, as we get closer to, you know, conducting those sort of reviews. So.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? We have a resolution in front of us. Commissioner Cole?
I move approval of the contract.
All right, we have a second. We have a second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. And I think by moving forward with the contract means all the three resolutions that were presented in front of us, which
That's right.
all are the trilogy of approving a contract, so. All right. That's good. All right, that brings us to our second to last item, which is striving for mental health excellence in the workplace. Mr. Bright?
Thank you. So I bring this forward more for your awareness. This is an interesting program that's going on, and just randomly, at the last department head meeting, I brought up this issue, and it sparked an unanticipated conversation of many issues of the coping and the work-life balance that probably, quite frankly, all of us are going through. This is meant, I don't know if we're truly out of this pandemic, or are we endemic, whatever it's called, but nevertheless, there, there's a lot of stress that we find everywhere. And for our leaders in the departments that encounter situations, so their staff that, that are facing, whether it be a family circumstance or whatever the situation is, there's some commonality. And I raise this, I could simply implement this administratively, but I wanted to bring this to your attention, the level of support and the commitment that I'm making is that to, that we increase our level of an employer of choice, that we take a concerted effort. And so the process to go about, once this is approved, is the intent is to send out a questionnaire to the employees and to gather information. Also take a closer look at our employee assistance program and to see what sort of resources. Typically, at the beginning of the year, we say, here's the EAP, folks, call us if you need us, and that's the end of it. And there really needs to be a greater emphasis. Third is, most importantly, is providing the, the training for supervisors that, how do you cope with these situations? How can you identify these issues? And again, that resonated with the group that seemed very interested in having this conversation. So this is a national effort that's going on, that's commonly with nonprofit organizations, but also some governmental units, and would like to sign us up as their organization and kind of move forward in this journey and, and hopefully show being a more caring employer. So, so this is presented and recommended for your approval.
Very good. Questions from Mr. Bright. Commissioner Douglas?
Just a quick question. So does the striving for mental health excellence in the workplace organization provide you with resources like templates for surveys or other materials?
They provide background information. This is much of what we're doing on our own, but, but certainly can provide. There's not a one size that fits all. I mean, we'll be working with our EAP provider, but, but I, I'm challenging HR to, to look at very specific training for helping supervisors to, you know, help their employees cope with, with mental health challenges. So, so there's, I recall if it provided you the link that, and it goes to the American Psychological Association, and it has a very specific pages of in the workplace, and talks about the different resources that are out there, and it's, it's very well organized. So potentially that, yes, that, that could provide us some information, but there's some things that we're looking at customizing very specific to our organization.
Yeah, I think this is, as you said, you could have just handled this administratively, but I think it's important for us as a supervising body to demonstrate our caring and compassion for the, the people who serve the people of Royal Oak. So good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yeah, I think it's wildly important that the administration is always thinking about ways to make us a more competitive employer, finding ways to increase your staff longevity and job satisfaction. And I think this is well worth, well worth moving forward. So I'll move for approval.
Motion back, Commissioner Dubac. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Cole. And I'll just echo what everybody said, and then I'm just going to add, and I know we're all feeling it, it's just the right thing to do. We love our brothers and sisters that work for the city at all levels in this community, at all departments, and if folks need help, they need someone to talk to, we can't just expect them to call a 800 number. We got to be a little bit more proactive because not only does it matter for all the business reasons, but it matters because we care about the people we work with. And I think that's a really important thing, also driving this, and commend you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bright, for taking the lead on this. Thank you. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to item 15, tree maintenance discussions requested by Commissioner Dubac, accepted by DPS Director Filipski.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Filipski, I apologize for keeping you about 37 minutes later, then you probably would have been out of here. I was confident we're going to move fast. I know adding something like this is something I usually would give other people crap for, but.
Indeed.
Given that, yeah, this is the first that we've gotten this year. It comes around every year, and sometimes, you know, neighborhoods rally around the trees. We just spent a lot of time talking about it. It's a huge, you know, contributor to our quality of life. People take it very personally here. I think we've done an excellent job on the website, really laying out our tree strategy. So I just wanted to give you an opportunity to speak to it, because this probably won't be the first one that gets raised. So I just want to make sure that everyone at the table and anyone that is listening understands how thoughtful we are about not just the, you know, managing our trees that might be at end of life, but also planting. So if you wouldn't mind just speaking to that process a little bit.
Sure, and you referenced something. There's some conversation being had about our process. Is that what you mean, on Facebook? Is that what it is?
What's that? Oh, no, we got a letter today. Then we got this letter, the first one we got, about a tree marked with the blue dot.
Understand, yes, I recall, yes.
And it was a big, beautiful tree, but I mean, even from the photo, you can tell that it's got some.
Yeah. Yeah, so to start there at that point, we're very judicious about whether or not a tree's to come down. We're not happy to fire up chainsaws. We are not quick to condemn a tree. If I recall, that one in particular, not only had outward signs of being unhealthy, it actually had incidents where large portions of the crown of the tree came out of it. And so in my view, that's a reasonable estimation there to say that that has to, to be removed. That said, we are very sensitive to that, and we're, I think if I do the math right, we're, we're three to one, if not better than that, on replacing trees that we've had to take down within what DPS work, not like engineering work. And when we do that, we, we are very selective about the, the species of trees. There's a big push with some of the members of the community that have gotten to know that are purists, and they want these native this and that, and they, you know, it's been sort of, we've sort of been accused of being lackadaisical about what sort of trees that we plant. accused of being lackadaisical about what sort of trees that we plant. Um, that's certainly not true every year. We we are limited by what stock is available locally, uh because the one thing we insist on is A, that the trees that we do end up selecting are within the hardiness zones for our area, um and that also that they were raised, a lot of trees are actually shipped across the country for sale. And so the ones that we select, they have to be, there's a term for it and it escapes me right now, um but from the time they sprout essentially are raised here in these conditions. So those are a couple of them. Um, and then we do consider the type of climate specifically we have here, our soils, and we, being that they're street trees, we limit trees that might have nuisance fruits, which can create issues for sewer systems and things. So we're very careful about that. Every year, we try to have some consistency in trees, uh but every year it's based on what's available. So we get a list of what's available from our contractor. Uh we bid it out last year. We only had one bidder. I'm actually pretty satisfied with that group. Uh but we look at what they have available and then the arborists provide their recommendations to me. We select um the trees that we think will do best. And then with the program now, the way it's changed, um we we limit the certain quantities of of species so that we don't have monoculture. And we do that intentionally as well. So those are just a few examples of how we really do put some thought into to how we go about this. Um, there were some concerns about, you know, they, there's some dead trees you see out there. And unfortunately, that is one of the the things you can learn to expect when you're doing mass tree planting programs. I don't have the number in front of me right now, but um the percentage of failed trees is not concerning to me. Uh and our vendor is very good about honoring warranties. So um, you know, to that end, we we put a lot, a lot of thought. In fact, before this came up, before the meeting, I was talking with Judy. We're we're meeting this Thursday already to begin planning for the the fall tree planting, which will begin in October.
And we love seeing it. And three to one's a pretty good ratio. I think that's something we talked about years ago, is we don't want to be going one to one. We need to be planting way more trees that are coming down so that future generations can enjoy the lush green Royal Oak that we do. And as one reemphasize, you mentioned, we have trained arborists making these decisions. It's not like the mayor out there being like that and that sure doesn't look healthy.
Yes, we have three, three trained, three trained arborists for a city of our size. That's a a real point of pride.
Yeah, absolutely. And their default is to keep a tree if it can be cut. But I mean, if it's creating a public hazard or it is just at end of life, then it's the responsible thing to remember.
A tree in a state, in a forest is fine or in somebody's backyard, but we have other concerns with with trees like that that we have to reasonably concern ourselves with.
Thanks again. Thanks. The the information on the website is great. So I really hope people will check this out and and understand like how robust a program we have. It's not just about winning the Tree City USA every year for like 50 years, but we understand it's a real important factor in quality of life.
I learned everywhere.
Thank you for getting out so we can talk about this a little bit.
No problem.
I just saw this. I'm like, oh, it's that time of year again. We're gonna get these questions again. Uh so I just wanted to lift it up and be like, here are the questions, the information's here. We do have a strategy. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right. Anything else for the betterment of our community? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion by Commissioner Dubac, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. All right, no discussion, Commissioner Macy?
Good.
Okay, good. Got a couple of words on record tonight. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, adjourn.